Good evening. This evening is Monday, June 5th, and we are in the Gray Hall for the Regular City Council meeting. Madam President, we call the board to adjourn.
Counselor King.
President.
Counselor Crowe.
President.
Counselor Forrest.
President.
Counselor King.
Good morning.
Counselor Forrest.
Counselor Liang.
President.
Counselor Calmidge.
President Hughes.
Here. Six months. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Harris.
Okay.
Seven members. Great. Thank you. If you'll all stand, please, and join me in a moment of silence for those service members serving here and abroad and their families. Think of those especially affected by the attacks in London over the weekend. Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to call forward from North Quincy, ROTC Wilson Chen. Wilson will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Wilson Chen. Madam President, if you'll read the opening.
Pursuant to the opening law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may record it through the media. Attendances are therefore advised to be kept recorded or transmitted are being made when perceived or unperceived by those present and as indicated in the notice form.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'd like to call forward Counselor Liang to the podium. She has a recommendation.
Good morning, colleagues. I'm here at the College of Engineers. I wanted to take a moment tonight to recognize North Quincy High School's coming out of the CPC program and the cadets that have been with us this evening. They're part of a group of dedicated students in the entire AFJR CPC program at work that have in this last year completed over 39,000 hours of community service. These include practices of meaning and honoring our veterans and other celebrations across the city throughout the year. They're not only dedicated to community service and giving back to the city, but are also disciplined students that are focused on excelling in their studies. Every year, the College of Action Foundation hosts the top eight Air Force Bay Area CPC teams across the nation for their national championship. This year, a team of six cadets worked together to successfully navigate the first two rounds, and the top four will be hosted in Washington, DC later this month for the tournament. With that, I'd like to call up the six cadets: Wilson Chen, Allison Wong, Gigi Wong, Brian Dow, Jessica Tai, and Carmen Chen.
(applause). I am ready.
In recognition of the active achievement in recent years, as members of the North Quincy JR CPC, all American academic whole team, having seven years' studies and committed to excellence, the Quiddity City Council hereby recognizes Wilson Chen, Allison Wong, Gigi Wong, Brian Dow, Jessica Tai, and Carmen Chen. In recognition of your exceptional dedication, self-discipline, and leadership, the Quiddity City Council sends its gratitude and appreciation to your efforts in representing our city on a national stage, placing at the highest levels in mathematics, science, leadership, vocabulary, and grammar. Your efforts are truly amazing and inspiring. We wish you continued success in all of your future endeavors in Washington, DC.
Oh, congratulations. (applause). Can I just say something to the board that we have to do? Sure, of course. Good luck, congratulations, and thank you very much. We'll take a brief recess, Madam President. (pause). (inaudible). You get a kind of bunch of accounts all in a row. You gotta get them out of there. There you go. All right.
Mark, you're almost on.
But, come on in. Here, guys. All right. (pause). (inaudible). Anyway. And we'll take that in session. Thank you very much to the ROTC in North Quincy. Good luck. And then, of course, turning to our agenda, you'll read our statement.
Number one on the agenda, 2017-093, appropriation for $471,155 to the water enterprise account stabilization fund. Upon the recommendation of the Commission of Republic Works and with the approval of the Board of Mayor, the sum of $400-
Motion, wait, ready?
Master, I believe that Commissioner Ramoni is with us here this evening. Evening, Commissioner.
Commissioner.
Evening, Madam President, members of council. This is an appropriation into the stabilization account. As you know, this is the time of year that we move money into a certain account or put it into stabilization from free cash, similar to the free cash in the City General Fund. Our free cash is a combination of excess revenues as well as breakage within our appropriation budget. It's all been included by the Department of Revenue, and we have that $1.4 million plus in free cash in what, this particular year, if we're looking to allocate $471,155 into stabilization, that brings our stabilization fund to a level of the following, $1.2 or $1.1 million. And with the free cash we have for this year, we feel we're in pretty good shape. The fiscal '18 will be forward with respect to the stabilization. The next item, if you want to speak on that as well to-
Yes, thank you.
-facilitate matters, that again is a request for appropriation of $1 million directly from free cash to a new account that we call Water Main Capital Projects. And the purpose of moving that money into contractual, we don't have enough time between now and fiscal cycle to design, go off to bid, and have a contract for any water main for what we may do, maybe reaching far way back at the St. Patton where we got to re-certify that excess of free cash. This provides us with an opportunity to capture that $1 million into the entire fiscal of our '18 budget. As I mentioned to you here this evening, I wanted to collect on that, and I already have a long argument, but I talked about that in the years to come. The Department, obviously with the appropriation there and the support of the City Council, we need to increase our involvement with water main replacement from the $1 million or $2 million that we're doing now to at least $3 million a year. That will put us on track over a 40-year period to eliminate those water mains today that are as old as '18, '92. These are online, cast iron, or number mature that we may not be aware of that causes to circulation because they're in mind within our system that decrease the diameter of the pipe. So, one way to make it less difficult for rate payers as well as taxpayers to support this measure is to have a combination of internal water main work by the Department of Public Works, another aspect reducing free cash. At the end of the year, we can identify free cash, maybe have a water main project to do that, and then, of course, Mass Water. We're in the seventh year of our funding from Mass Water Authority, initially we spend $1,500,000, we pretty much get $1 million plus a year. So, we're leveraging, hopefully, this funding with Mass Water to bring our level of replacement to $2 million for fiscal 2018. This not only will allow us to improve water mains in the streets that we're doing, and we have accomplish that we need to do, but it will also facilitate some requests that the public may have, the new folks may have, to road and street improvement. Obviously, it's this main policy not to put an overlay on a road that has significant infrastructure problems beneath the layer of road. Therefore, whenever roads be in progress, we look at sewer lines, water lines, grain lines, to make sure that when we spend $300,000, $500,000, or $700,000 to improve the roadway, we're not going to be back within five days and excavated again. So, it does mean that less roads are able to be done, but it does mean that when we leave the roadway, we can pretty much guarantee that that road hopefully won't be tight for the next 30, 40, 50, or 60 years. So, this will end prior to, two years ago, in-house, we hadn't done a water main for a while. So, a few years ago, we did a section of Washington Court that would be priced at down to crawl, where we utilized, where we're leveraging some Mass DOT work along the bridge and the Washington Street corridor, and we have an opportunity to widen Washington Court and to resurface that roadway as well. So, we wanted to make sure that we wanted to upgrade that water main, and now that we have the funding and the budget to do that, we utilized the talent's workforce and we have replaced that water main along the Washington Court. This past year, we followed that up with replacing a water main at the cemetery. So, those of you who participated, there were some owners that perhaps might have visited, loved ones over the past couple of weeks. You noticed that there was tremendous amount of infrastructure work at the cemetery that was done in-house by the Department of Public Works. And this year, in fiscal '18, we're hoping to do Stevens Street in-house with a water main replacement. Our numbers indicate that when we go outside for design and private contract to do the water main, it could cost anywhere from $225,000 to $240,000. The work that we're doing in-house is about $50,000. So, it does behoove us. I know it could be somewhat difficult for some folks to go on increasing a labor force, but it really is a way to get more surface, get more water mains done, and control spending at the same time. So, both of these numbers, the $471,000 goes into stabilization to protect integrity of the water operation barring any unforeseen emergency, and we feel that the $1 million could go into the capital fund to continue to escalate our water main replacement.
Thank you. Commissioner. Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President, through you and Commissioner, Commissioner. Always good to see further investment into roads in particular. I know that has been an issue with this body. It's taken out quite substantially, and many of us have created alternative solutions or presented alternative solutions to increase access and funding for roads and sidewalks. So, certainly, you know, excited to see the $1 million being appropriated for water main work. It was, really became evident to me, basically, your high mark is award two, the City Council City Council, and all the roads that you were able to take care of in Ward II, almost to the extent that what's left, since we need a water main replacement itself. As I work with members of the administration and identify areas for improvement, these monies become, seemingly evident to the folks in Ward II. So, certainly glad to see that, and to piggybacking off of all the conversations that we've had up here in the Finance Committee regarding the attitudes and outlooks towards stabilization, really, I see them continuing to grow that account, not only because it makes sense to us sitting in the Finance Committee, but it really, really makes sense to the credit analysts, who are obviously the independent keepers of our credit rating as a city. So, very important. I'll be supporting both of these measures. I'll obviously afford an opportunity if any of my fellow councilors have any questions, comments, thoughts around items one and two.
Mr. President, if I could, just to further enunciate the point, we have 238 miles of water main, $1.2 million feet of water main, 480,000 of which fall into the category that I thought. So, pretty much, when you folks get calls, complaints about a road, obviously, more times than not, you're looking at a $90,000 to $95,000 water main that if you put $500,000 on top of that water main, is suggesting that that main's going to last for 150 years, 160 years, 140 years. What you're really doing is saying that that roadway will likely be severely excavated within the next 10, 15, or 14, 15, 20 years. So, it's not an uncommon situation in Ward II, if that gets amplified across the entire city. Most of the roads that you're looking at now have old water mains on them that should be replaced, or we're looking at a technique that would line them. A lot of these water mains cannot be lined, they need to be excavated. We've asked our agent consultant, Weston Sampson, to, because we did a study about 10 years ago on our entire water main system. We know the age, the material, we have all that information. So, they should be able to give us a list of those roads, water mains, that are memorable to something that we have been done in the city, as far as I know, which is lining a water main. They literally pull out that to regulation that we talked about the other night, and that avoids a lot of design spending, avoids a lot of excavation work, a lot of contracting. So, the $2 or $3 million that we're spending per year may have some longer legs to, if we have more work done, if the lining technique is available, how many streets would be enabled to. So, we are looking at various ways to get the job done, preserve as much funding as we possibly can.
Yes, Counselor Finn.
Thank you, Madam President. I just really wanted to point out that particularly with the stabilization fund, if I remember correctly, when the independent auditor presented before us, he actually commended the strength of the enterprise account as it related specifically to the stabilization fund. And again, I was thinking, perhaps you could just again talk about the importance of that stabilization fund to the rate payer and fee payer in terms of that.
It's significant, not only on the water side, Counselor Finn, but also on the sewer side. If we had a major significant sewer break on a major trunk line, our budget, even though we had a bridge contract and workforce that is able to do that, obviously, that would tax us to the point that we'd have to go to an emergency fund. And therefore, the stabilization fund enables us to provide those types of emergencies.
It allows for some consistency, so you don't see radical jumps.
It also allows us to maintain a level of consistency and something that people can rely upon, that every year is hopefully going to be somewhat stable without the spikes that we were saying before. So, both in terms of allowing us to operate them on a level of yield, and our rate payers know that we're wiping the bottom line, but also if there is a rickie on water or sewer, we have available funds to correct that.
Great, well, thank you. And again, I intend to support it. I don't know if it's been second, but it's been second as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I made a motion to approve item one for appropriation of $471,155 to the water enterprise account stabilization fund.
Motion approved by Counselor Crowe. Second by Counselor Finn. On the motion, then?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calmidge.
Yes.
Seven members.
Next, I'd also like to make a motion on item number two, 2017-75, for a land for appropriation of $1 million for 2017 water main capital projects.
Thank you. Motion approved by Counselor Crowe. Second by Counselor Finn. On the motion, then?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calmidge.
Yes.
Seven members.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselors.
Next item, Madam President.
Next item is number three on the agenda, 2017-095, appropriation for $181,000 for pipe communication system repairs. Upon the recommendation, sorry, lady.
Hello, Chief.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe you, Counselor, what package you have a letter that I have sent to the mayor's office outlining what is in fact the issue. Going to wake up May 22nd, four of the eight fire stations that are connected to the voice system from our fire line failed. This is an old system, it's a copper wire system, and pretty much sort of analog type switches in the dispatch center. It's a standalone system, it doesn't make it with our computer dispatch system, but being that it is aging as it is, it will start to be easily repaired. Most of our problems that we had with it have been up this year. We did about a year ago in Quincy Center, we were on the construction of a contract to blow a wire. Brent Campbell and the T Bell Group was able to effectively repair it, considering the time of the tunnel. We've had another incident maybe six months ago where we had hose neck and journeying towns going down. We had water infiltration into the system. Again, we were able to repair it, and it wasn't done very wrong. So, we were able to work around it. So, the problems we had with it have been fairly easy to repair in time. It wasn't anticipated, of course, we would have this major failure of four stations, which we found from the suppliers that they're no longer supporting this piece of hardware. So, we, I met with Brent Campbell from T Bell, I met with Eric Chani from the IT Department, and a representative from Caltralis. We felt that collectively, the way to go was to take advantage of the millions of fiber optics in all of our stations. That program started a number of years ago. It was due to the very slow computer speed, your experience in doing our required incident reports in each station. About a year ago, in conjunction with the IT Department, and this was all work with the schools as well, we were able to get fiber to our West Quincy Station, which was, again, their computer was falling out. And then, fairly recently, we were able to get engine eight in Hose Net connected to the fiber. So, this, as untimely as it says, it provides an opportunity to provide a better system that will interface with our computer dispatch software. So, as untimely as this is, I wish I had it to you before, but the fact that it's coming before you now does provide an opportunity in this case, this system, to fiber which can be built up further in the future. And I hope you'll consider it and approve this. If you, if you're sure yourself by that, it's in the air, the current situation really has to be remembered. If we have few alternatives, this system can't be repaired as it is.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President, you and the chief. First off, I want to mention, I want to thank yourself and your firefighters yesterday. We averted a real serious issue over Marina Bay, tool on fire, and I just can't say enough, that could have been, if not, that could have been a real, real, real serious situation, especially because in the beginning of a sooner part of that building process. So, I commend every single, every single one of you folks. You mentioned the opportunity to improve, well, that only means an opportunity to improve public safety, as far as I'm concerned. $180,000 to improve communications with our fire stations. I would support it. I'm going to make a motion that we approve $180,000.
Okay. Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Madam President. Could you make, I just have a quick question for you. So, the, it says you have four of the eight stations experience a loss of the voice connectivity, but are we replacing the system in all of the eight stations, or just those four that have the issues?
This will go to all of the stations and improve connectivity, restore connectivity.
That was okay. I'll ask some questions.
Okay. Second, there, Counselor Liang. On the motion, anyone else? Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. Be supporting this this evening, just so the council knows and is aware, in charge through fashion, they just passed the order to give everyone an update.
Yes, Counselor. Currently, there is a balance of $599,428. After this appropriation of $180,000, there will be a balance of $419,428.
Thank you. All right. Motion made, seconded on the motion, Madam President.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calmidge.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Seven members.
Thank you. Counselor Finn.
Thank you, Madam President. I just really wanted to point out that particularly with the stabilization fund, if I remember correctly, when the independent auditor presented before us, he actually commended the strength of the enterprise account as it related specifically to the stabilization fund. And again, I was thinking, perhaps you could just again talk about the importance of that stabilization fund to the rate payer and fee payer in terms of that.
It's significant, not only on the water side, Counselor Finn, but also on the sewer side. If we had a major significant sewer break on a major trunk line, our budget, even though we had a bridge contract and workforce that is able to do that, obviously, that would tax us to the point that we'd have to go to an emergency fund. And therefore, the stabilization fund enables us to provide those types of emergencies.
It allows for some consistency, so you don't see radical jumps.
It also allows us to maintain a level of consistency and something that people can rely upon, that every year is hopefully going to be somewhat stable without the spikes that we were saying before. So, both in terms of allowing us to operate them on a level of yield, and our rate payers know that we're wiping the bottom line, but also if there is a rickie on water or sewer, we have available funds to correct that.
Great, well, thank you. And again, I intend to support it. I don't know if it's been second, but it's been second as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I made a motion to approve item one for appropriation of $471,155 to the water enterprise account stabilization fund.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor Finn. On the motion, then?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calmidge.
Yes.
Seven members.
Next, I'd also like to make a motion on item number two, 2017-75, for a land for appropriation of $1 million for 2017 water main capital projects.
Thank you. Motion approved by Counselor Crowe. Seconded by Counselor Finn. On the motion, then?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calmidge.
Yes.
Seven members.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselors.
Next item, Madam President.
Next item is number three on the agenda, 2017-095, appropriation for $181,000 for pipe communication system repairs. Upon the recommendation, sorry, lady.
Hello, Chief.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe you, Counselor, what package you have a letter that I have sent to the mayor's office outlining what is in fact the issue. Going to wake up May 22nd, four of the eight fire stations that are connected to the voice system from our fire line failed. This is an old system, it's a copper wire system, and pretty much sort of analog type switches in the dispatch center. It's a standalone system, it doesn't make it with our computer dispatch system, but being that it is aging as it is, it will start to be easily repaired. Most of our problems that we had with it have been up this year. We did about a year ago in Quincy Center, we were on the construction of a contract to blow a wire. Brent Campbell and the T Bell Group was able to effectively repair it, considering the time of the tunnel. We've had another incident maybe six months ago where we had hose neck and journeying towns going down. We had water infiltration into the system. Again, we were able to repair it, and it wasn't done very wrong. So, we were able to work around it. So, the problems we had with it have been fairly easy to repair in time. It wasn't anticipated, of course, we would have this major failure of four stations, which we found from the suppliers that they're no longer supporting this piece of hardware. So, we, I met with Brent Campbell from T Bell, I met with Eric Chani from the IT Department, and a representative from Caltralis. We felt that collectively, the way to go was to take advantage of the millions of fiber optics in all of our stations. That program started a number of years ago. It was due to the very slow computer speed, your experience in doing our required incident reports in each station. About a year ago, in conjunction with the IT Department, and this was all work with the schools as well, we were able to get fiber to our West Quincy Station, which was, again, their computer was falling out. And then, fairly recently, we were able to get engine eight in Hose Net connected to the fiber. So, this, as untimely as it says, it provides an opportunity to provide a better system that will interface with our computer dispatch software. So, as untimely as this is, I wish I had it to you before, but the fact that it's coming before you now does provide an opportunity in this case, this system, to fiber which can be built up further in the future. And I hope you'll consider it and approve this. If you, if you're sure yourself by that, it's in the air, the current situation really has to be remembered. If we have few alternatives, this system can't be repaired as it is.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President, you and the chief. First off, I want to mention, I want to thank yourself and your firefighters yesterday. We averted a real serious issue over Marina Bay, tool on fire, and I just can't say enough, that could have been, if not, that could have been a real, real, real serious situation, especially because in the beginning of a sooner part of that building process. So, I commend every single, every single one of you folks. You mentioned the opportunity to improve, well, that only means an opportunity to improve public safety, as far as I'm concerned. $180,000 to improve communications with our fire stations. I would support it. I'm going to make a motion that we approve $180,000.
Okay. Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Madam President. Could you make, I just have a quick question for you. So, the, it says you have four of the eight stations experience a loss of the voice connectivity, but are we replacing the system in all of the eight stations, or just those four that have the issues?
This will go to all of the stations and improve connectivity, restore connectivity.
That was okay. I'll ask some questions.
Okay. Second, there, Counselor Liang. On the motion, anyone else? Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President.
There is a way to get more surface, get more water mains done and control spending at the same time. So both of these numbers, the 471 goes into stabilization to protect integrity of the water operation barring any unforeseen emergency. And we feel that the million dollars could go into a capital fund to continue to escalate our water main replacement.
Thank you, Commissioner. Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, Commissioner, Commissioner. Always good to see further investment into roads in particular. I know that has been an issue because bodies have taken out quite substantially. Many of us have created alternative solutions or presented alternative solutions to increase access and funding for roads and sidewalks. So certainly, you know, excited to see the million dollars being appropriated for water main work. It was really became evident to me, basically, your heart work as a ward two, the former ward two city council, and all the roads that you were able to take care of in Ward two, almost to the extent that what's left essentially needs water main replacements. So as I work with members of the administration and identify areas for improvement, these monies become seemingly evident to the folks in Ward two. So certainly glad to see that and kind of piggybacking off of all of the conversations that we've had up here in the finance committee regarding the attitudes and outlooks towards stabilization. Really like I see it continuing to grow that pounds, not only because it makes sense to us in the finance committee, but it really, really makes sense to the credit analysts who obviously are the independent keepers of our credit rating as a state. So very important. I'll be supporting both of these measures. I'd also afford an opportunity if any of my fellow councils had any questions, comments, thoughts around items one and two.
Mr. President, if I could just to further enunciate Dr. Point. We have 238 miles of water main, 1.2 million dollars, 1.2 million dollar feet of water main, 480,000 of which fall into the category that I talked about. So pretty much when you folks get calls, complaints about a road, obviously more times than not, you're looking at a 90 to a 95 degree of water main that if you put $500,000 on top of that water main, is suggesting that that main is going to last for 150 years, 160 years, 140 years. What you're really doing is saying that roadway will likely be severely excavated within the next 10, 15, or 20 years. So it's not an uncommon situation in Ward two that gets amplified across the entire city. Most of the roads that you're looking at now, that all water mains on them should be replaced, or we're looking at a technique that would line them. A lot of these water mains cannot be lined, they need to be excavated. But we've asked our engineering consultant, Weston Sampson, to, because we did a study about 10 years ago on our entire water main system. We know the age, the material, we have all that information. So they should be able to give us a list of those roads, water mains that are remountable to something that we have done in the city, as far as I know, which is lining water main. They literally pull out of that to break the ledge that we talked about the other night, and that avoids a lot of design spending, avoids a lot of excavation work, a lot of contracting. So the two or three million dollars that we're spending per year may have some longer ledge to, there will be more work done if the lining technique is available, how many streets would be enough to that. So we are looking at various ways to get the job done and preserve as much funding as possible.
Yes, Counselor Pen.
Thank you, Madam President. I just really wanted to point out that particularly with the stabilization fund, if I remember correctly, when the independent auditor presented before us, he actually commended the strength of the enterprise account as it related specifically to the stabilization fund. And again, I was thinking perhaps you could just again talk about the importance of that stabilization fund to the rate payer, the fee payer in terms of that.
It's significant, not only on the water side, Counselor Pen, but also on the sewer side. If we had a major significant sewer break on a major trunk line, our budget, even though we have a bridge contract and workforce that is able to do that, obviously that would tax us to this point that we'd have to go to an emergency fund. And therefore, the stabilization fund enables us to provide those types of emergencies.
It allows for some consistency so you don't see radical jumps.
It also allows us to maintain a somewhat, a level of consistency and something that people can rely upon, that every year is roughly going to be somewhat stable without the spikes that we were saying before. So both in terms of allowing us to operate on a level of yield, and our rate payers know that we're watching the bottom line, but also if there is a emergency on water or sewer, we have available funds to manage to correct.
Great, well, thank you. And again, I intend to support it. I don't know if it's second, but it's super second as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I think I made a motion to approve by the launch appropriation of 471,155 dollars to water main project count stabilization on the second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Crowe, second by Counselor Pen. On the motion, Counselor Pen.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Lefarge.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Pelletji.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Seven members.
Next, I'd also like to make a motion on page number two, 2017, dash, or not, four, appropriation of 1 million dollars for 2017 water main capital projects.
Thank you. Motion to approve by Counselor Crowe, second by Counselor Pen. On the motion, Counselor.
Counselor Pen.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Pen.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Lefarge. Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Pelletji.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight, seven members.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselors.
Next item, Madam President.
Next item is number three on the agenda, 2017 dash zero nine five, appropriation of 180,000 dollars for fire communication system repairs. On the recommendation of.
Hello, Chief.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe your counsel, what package you have a letter that I have sent to the mayor's office outlining what is in fact the issue. Going to wake on May 22nd, four of the eight fire stations that are connected to the voice system from our fire line failed. This is an old system, it's a copper wire system, and pretty much sort of analog type switches in the dispatch center. It's a standalone system, it doesn't mate with our computer dispatch system. But being that it is aging as it is, it was not to be easily repaired. Most of our problems that we had with it have been out this year. We did about a year ago in Quincy Center, we were on the construction of a contract in Fort Ollia. Brent Campbell and the T Bell group has, was able to effectively repair it with the power at the time. We've had another incident maybe six months ago where we had Houzneck and Germantown going down. We had water infiltration into the system. Again, we were able to repair it, and it wasn't done very wrong. So we were able to work around this. So the problems we've had with it have been fairly easy to repair in terms. It wasn't anticipated, of course, we would have this major failure of four stations, which we found from the suppliers that they're no longer supporting this piece of fiber. So we, I met with Brent Campbell from T Bell, I met with Eric Pichani from the IT department, and Representative from Comtronis. We felt that collectively, the way to go was to take advantage of the millions of fiber optics in all of our stations. That program started a number of years ago. It was due to the very slow computer speed, new experiences doing our required installation reports in the station. The last, about a year ago, in conjunction with the IT department, and this was all working with schools as well, we were able to get fiber to our West Quincy Station, which was, again, their computer was falling out. And then fairly recently, we were able to get engine eight in Houzneck connected to the fiber. So this, as untimely as this is, provides an opportunity to provide a better system that will interface with our computer dispatch software. So as untimely as this is, I wish I had it before budget, but the fact that it's coming before you now does provide an opportunity to secure the system. It's a fiber which can be built up further in the future. And I hope you'll consider it and approve this. If you ensure yourself on that as the mayor, the current situation really has to be reminded. When we have few alternatives, this system can't be repaired as it is.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President, meeting chief. First off, I want to mention, I want to thank yourself and your firefighters yesterday. We averted, averted a real serious issue over Marina Bay, two alarm fire. And I just can't say enough, that could have been, if not, that could have been a real, real, real serious situation, especially because in the beginning of a sooner part of that building process. So I commend every single, every single one of you folks. You mentioned the opportunity to improve, well, that only means an opportunity to improve public safety as far as I'm concerned. 180,000 dollars to improve communications with our fire stations. I am going to support it, and I'm going to make a motion that we approve the 180,000 dollars.
Okay. Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Madam President. Could you make sure, I just have a quick question for you. So the, it says you have four of the eight stations experience a loss of the voice connectivity, but are we replacing the system at all of the eight stations, or just those four that had the issues?
This will go to all of the stations and improve connectivity and restore it and improve it.
That was okay. I'll add some to the motion.
Okay, second by Counselor Liang. On the motion, anyone else? Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. Be supporting this this evening, just so the council knows and is aware and in charge through fashion, they just passed the auditor to give everyone an update.
Yes, Counselor. Currently, there is a balance of 599,428. After this appropriation of 180,000 dollars, there will be a balance of 419,428 dollars.
Thank you. Are motions made? Seconded on the motion, Madam President.
Counselor Pen.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Pen.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Lefarge.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Pelletji.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, Chief.
Thank you, Madam President, Counselors.
Next item, Madam President.
Number four on the agenda, 2017 dash zero nine six, appropriation of 155,333 dollars to the community preservation, restore, and recreation projects. On request of the community.
Motion to approve by Counselor Crowe.
Obviously, this is a standing line item that we see right about this time every year. Would like to, with your commission, recognize the city council liaison to the CPC, Council of Vaughn, sit in on these meetings as these projects are discussed and take some under advisement and hopefully get to the actual numbers before this this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Madam President. You know, just being on the community preservation committee over the last two years, I've worked with a group that's very dedicated to the city. I want to recognize them as well, they did a fine job this year. Our chairman, Cole Derry, John Brenahan, Connie Driscoll, Tom Lynn, David Murphy, Tony Ritchie, Will Smith, and Maury Mraz. They bring a lot of energy, a lot of enthusiasm, and the knowledge that they have and bring to that committee is unbelievable. I've learned a lot from a lot of the committee members that have been on there since the inception of this community, CTA's funding, Community Preservation Committee. I just want to go into really just what we've done this past year with our four allocations of funding, where our first was our recreation, which we did, has a revitalization of the Leo Kelly Park at Houzneck Garden Club. We repaired floats for the Day Water Ramp, Perk Earth Beach for the City of Quincy Marine Unit. Now that falls under the jurisdiction of the recreation bucket, I guess I could call it. And then we went into our historical preservation fund, which is a little different allocation. The City of Quincy came in front of us with the clerk's office to preserve some city records, the assessor's office to preserve some city records. There was a replacement fence of the St. John's Baptist Church, restoring dining room in East Pollard to the Jose Josiah Quincy House. We also had Houzneck Congregational Church came in to repair and restore granite. There was the United First Parish Church came in as well. Facilities plan, repair and restore the bell tower right across the street here, Bethany Congregational Church. They wanted to restore some Quincy Yacht Club, photographs in there, and Sailors' Saint Harbor Door at Quincy Housing Authority. That was in our bucket for the historical preservation funding area. The open space fund, which is a different area of targeting, is the lilies for the Swan Sea Gardens, the renovation of the Germantown Circle Shed Memorial for Quincy Housing Authority. We also, the folks that came in from Quincy Environmental Network for some open space, the Mannan Lake for City of Quincy Department of Public Works was a feasible study. Also, the Quincy Department of Public Works and Friends of Sailor Pond permitting stormwater drainage refit, and the Eagle Scout in Swan came in for materials. That was under our open space funding. And our last bucket, which was a huge one, is the Affordable Housing Fund, which Neighbor Works, which is doing over by the forward shipyard, came in for Affordable Housing Units, which is our last bucket. Instead of doing the available 10% threshold, 10% that they do, they did 20%. And they're going to do 28 units. And we were able, under the Community Preservation Committee, to give them 250,000 dollars to help them out with the Affordable Housing. I know we speak a lot about that here inside the chambers about Affordable Housing helping lead that, and we were happy to help out the Watsons and the Neighbor Works doing that. Overall, this past year, it was a great opportunity to see all the folks come in and do these preservations. You know, you look on your taxes, taxes every year, you see that 1%. It's roughly between 30 and 40 dollars, and you see it going to the uses of the City of Quincy. Very important allocation of funding that you only, you know, 30 and 40 dollars that each of us put up to see the differences in the community. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this allocation of funding.
Counselor Pen.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I want to thank Counselor DeBonum for all the incredible work that goes into that. I've actually had the chance to witness that. And I'm particularly happy that the historic preservation associated with Houzneck Congregational Church is part of that. So I think that that's a fantastic thing. But the other thing I just really wanted to say is that this came to be a part of Quincy's resources available thanks to the citywide ballotry from the past. And since it's been passed, I don't know the total amount of resources, but it has to be absolutely tremendous, the amount that's been able to be applied to a lot of the special projects that things the community are involved in that fit under those categories. So it's really been, in my mind, a real gift to the city and worth it tremendously. And again, thank you, Counselor, for all the work that you did in relation to it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Pen. All right. Is there a motion to, by Counselor Vaughn, seconded by Counselor Pen? On the motion, Madam President.
Counselor Pen.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Pen.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Lefarge.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Pelletji.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Seven members.
Thank you, Madam President.
Next item on the agenda is number five, 2017 dash zero nine seven, in appropriation of 5300,000 to community preservation recreation projects.
Motion.
Thank you, Madam President. It's now over to your great finance committee for our.
Thank you for further comments or ad and advertise. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is number six, 2017 dash zero nine eight, in ordinance amendment title 17, minimum living space per dwelling. In ordinance relative to the minimum living space per dwelling, whereas overall population of a small area.
By Counselor Harris. On the motion.
What motion?
Well, we need to see through the motion with that. Okay. All right. Counselor Harris.
I want to commend Counselor Pelletji, I sat through a portion of both. I think that's why Counselor Pelletji and Counselor, who sits next to me? No. Lefarge aren't here right now because they're downstairs dealing with a situation where we, this is tied into. So I will support Counselor Pelletji's ordinance when it does come to it. I thank you for.
Thank you very much, Counselor Harris. We're going to refer this to committee to advertise, and we'll give up if a later ordinance can be. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is number six, 2017 dash, oh, excuse me, number seven, 2017 dash zero nine nine, a gift of 3,250 dollars from various donors to dear Peter Dean.
Motion to accept the gift and also send a letter, email, newsletter.
Great, thank you. Yes, Florence wants to grant it. Thank you, Counselor Crowe. Madam President, you have called it.
Counselor Pen.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Pen.
Yes.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Lefarge.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Pelletji.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Seven members. Next on the agenda is number eight, 2017, 100, 3,530 dollars for various donors.
Motion to accept the gift and also send a letter.
Motion to accept the gift, Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor Pen. On the motion, Madam President.
Counselor Pen.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Pen.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Lefarge.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Pelletji.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Seven members. Next item on the agenda is 2017 dash one zero one, result of Spectra Compression Station.
Wait for the read, Madam President. Thank you very much, Madam President. This is just a, another form of vocalization put forward by myself and Counselor Lefarge, who have been aggressively along with multiple neighborhood groups and regional groups and a whole host of other folks opposing the Spectra Energies application to install a gas compressor station along the way on the side of Florida Basin. As I said, this process has been going on well over two years. Been there, you know, day one, anticipated in every public comment period. As you probably have read at some point recently, Mass DEP has recently approved this project for waterways license back on the 17th of May. So essentially, the public has a 21-day appeal period, and that warrant on June 7th. So Counselor Lefarge, although I know she's at the other meeting downstairs, and I just wanted to take the opportunity and express that through the city council and notify the public that essentially, if you have a problem with them issuing the waterways license, you have until Wednesday to make those comments public. So please, those folks in Quincy Point, Germantown, because, you know, I get a lot of emails, I get a lot of telephone calls, take the time. I've sent out an email, it's on my Facebook page, Counselor Lefarge, it's kind of the same. Take the time, weigh in, and just keep fighting this thing. So with that, I would ask my colleagues to support me on this this evening, support us on this this evening.
All right. Counselor Vaughn.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, before moving to Marymount, I lived over in Quincy Point. Still have a two-family over there right on lawn path that is abutting this entire station. I've attended a few of these meetings across the street over the Thomas Gray Public Library, and I will tell you that some of the things and the studies that they've already done is scaring me to be very, very honest with you. Admissions from construction stations cause headaches, nosebleeds, and eye and throat irritation down here. And then pollutants listed in the Spectra application also increases the evidence of cancer and heart and lung disease. These are serious repercussions on people. And I still coach the Quincy Point Panthers at Ford River Field, I'm going to my seventh season. And a lot of the little children that we have, I do seventh and eighth graders that I coach, but we completed, we started in first grade all the way up to eighth grade, and a lot of these children live right in that Ford River, you know, field area. This is something that I can't believe that's trying to happen. I want to commend Counselor Crowe for all his hard work in Ward two. This is something that, if this happens, if this is going about, it's going to be a serious problem. So I'll be in support of this. I want to thank you for all your hard work, Counselor Crowe. Thank you.
Okay, motion approved by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor Vaughn. On the motion, Madam President.
Counselor Pen.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Pen.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Lefarge.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Pelletji.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Seven members.
Thank you, Madam President. That ends our formal agenda for this evening. Next, going to approval of previous meeting minutes. Before you, you have the main 2017 minutes. Motion approved by Counselor Harris, seconded by Counselor Crowe. All those in favor? All those against? We need the minutes added. This time, we'll recess, change the finance committee meeting, and we will come back to the conference later. Thank you.